Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 2019 Planning Commission meeting. And I'm gonna bring that to order now. As a reminder, can you please silence your cellphones? Amber, can you do roll call?
Here.
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 All right.
Before we start, I'd like to just kinda go over a few of the ground rules for this meeting. And so the commission will be presented with agenda items by the city planning department. And then a representative for the agenda item, if they would like, can have a couple minutes to speak on the item and answer any specific questions that the commission might have. If appropriate, I'll then open a public hearing. And this will be the opportunity for you to address the commission about the issue you might be interested in. So our goal is to have a fair hearing, and we want everybody to be heard. But I also ask that you keep your time to talk to five minutes. And please keep your discussion and comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone else has spoken in the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. And then the representative and staff will then have the opportunity to answer any questions or respond to issues that might have been brought up during the hearing. Then we'll open the floor to the commission for questions and comments and a vote. The commission will vote based on applicable law, state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and for the good of the community. Having summarized those basics, I do wanna also cover another part of our responsibility that's related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regards to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have previously adopted. While the public hearings are required for each plat, and we welcome any and all comments concerning these items, please understand that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws and regulations that I've previously just described. I ask if you intend to speak, please come up and speak, and then sign up here on the dais. There's a sign-in sheet here. And please, when you do come forward to speak, state your name and address for the record. Okay, so to get started this afternoon, we have a number of administrative items we just have to deal with. And we're gonna do that up front, which are a result of applicants withdrawing or asking for postponement of a couple of different items. So I'm gonna go ahead and go through those at this time. So part of old business, we have agenda item number one, which is PL 2019-439, ecological insulation recommendation for conditional use approval. The applicant has withdrawn this item, and no further action will be taken. Agenda item number two is 2019-500, the Greens at Auburn Plan Development District Amendment. The applicant for this item has requested to postpone until our next meeting on a date certain of 12 December 2019. I'll need a motion. So move.
Second.
We're gonna come all at once.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many times can an applicant postpone a request?
Well, that's actually up to the commission. There's sort of been, in my experience, somewhat of an unwritten three strikes and you're out rule, but there's nothing that actually says that it can't be postponed as many times as the commission sees fit to postpone it. It's at the discretion of the commission.
There is a motion?
I have a motion, and I had a second, too.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
Such that with the others that are being postponed, and this one is requested so many times to be reheard, that it be heard last on the agenda for old business at our meeting on the 12th.
Okay. I have an amendment to the motion, so we'll first vote on that. So do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Voting on the amendment or...
We're voting on the amendment.
Amendment.
All those opposed say no?
No.
Okay. So the motion carries. The vote for the amendment carries, and then we'll have another vote on the agenda item as amended. So a motion?
We have that motion.
We still have to...
So move.
We still have to vote on the item as amended.
As amended. So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. A motion carries. Let's see. The next one is agenda item number three, which is 2019-516, Summerlin Plat number 2B, which is a preliminary plat approval for single-family residential subdivision. This has also been requested by the applicant to be postponed until a date certain at our next meeting of 12 December 2019. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, which is 2019-517, Summerlin Plat number 2B, final plat approval for a conventional, single-family residential subdivision, which has also been asked by the applicant to be postponed until a date certain of our next meeting, which is 12 December 2019. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. And then let's go to agenda item number eight, which is PL 2019-584, warehouse distribution. It's a recommendation for conditional use approval for a warehouse distribution center. This has also been asked by the applicant, has asked us to postpone until our next meeting at date certain of 12 December 2019. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of Packet Meeting minutes from 7 October and regular meeting minutes from 10 October 2019, as well as one additional item, which is agenda item number five. This is case PL 2019-583, Sanford Commercial Subdivision of a Single Lot into Two with a New Right-of-Way. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is Sanford Commercial Subdivision, plat number six. This is actually one of our newer plan development districts in the city, and this particular development has seen quite a bit of activity in recent months, so you're familiar with the number of applications that have gone through this body. This is the most recent of which is this one. This is a final plat request to essentially create two lots out of one. And you can see the two lots are reflected here up along the East Sanford Extension. Part of this plat includes the dedication of this right-of-way that will ultimately lead and provide a secondary access to what is intended to be a large multifamily development. It meets all the requirements for approval, as we mentioned, at Packet Meeting on Monday. In a typical situation, any subdivision plat that involves four or fewer lots can be approved administratively, but because there is right-of-way that is proposed to be dedicated, that requires Planning Commission consideration and approval. But staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Since this is the consent agenda, does not require a public hearing. Have any discussion or a motion from the commission?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to new business. First item in new business is agenda item number six, which is case PL 2019-594, Longleaf Crossing, Phase Four. It's a re-division of lots 82 and 83 for a performance residential development. This is the preliminary plat. Mr. Kip?
Good evening, commissioners. This is a request, as I mentioned, to re-subdivide lots 82 and 83. The property is zoned PDD with a CDD base zone. It's within the College Crossing PDD, which was approved in 1999. This section of the PDD is Section D, which allows up to 770 dwelling units and a maximum density of 5.5 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has platted this previously in 2017 as duplex lots. There would have been two duplex lots. They are requesting to re-subdivide it into townhomes, townhome units, so going from basically two duplexes or four units to six townhome units. No major comments for the property, and it fits into the master plan for the area. Did not receive any calls or comments from the public on it, and we are recommending approval. Happy to answer any questions. And I don't know that the applicants...
We've got a couple...
The survey area is here for it. Yep.
Any... Okay. All right, so this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this subject? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, ask for discussion, questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
I move on approval of item six.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item is agenda item number seven, which is PL 2019-595, and this is the final plat for the same piece of property, the Longleaf Crossing, Phase Four.
Yep, same piece of property. It meets the density and use and total number of units that were proposed in the approved master plan. Here is the subdivision layout again, and again, we are recommending approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so this is a final plat, which does not require a public hearing, so look free to discuss.
I got a question. Does staff change their recommendations in their last five minutes?
Why do you ask?
Because I'm fixing to make a motion to approve, but I wanted to give you that opportunity and that the two go together.
No, no change of heart.
You'll provide them...
Change of heart. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is item number nine, which is case PL 2019-586, which is the Holy Trinity Church Expansion. Mr. Kip?
Yes, this is a request to expand a conditional use. The church is existing. It's been at that location since at least the 50s. At that time, we probably did not have the whole conditional use process, but it is there now, and we have not received any complaints or zoning violations from the church. Church uses in the DDH, which is the zoning district for the property, allow churches conditionally, and so that's why this case is before you, because they would like to expand that use. The proposed expansion is really two phases. The first phase, which is the most imminent and kind of what they're most ready to move on, is a little under 8,000 square feet addition for instructional facilities. Churches in DDH are not allowed to have daycares, but they can have pre-K or kindergarten instructional classes, Sunday school, that type of thing. So that's the first phase. The second phase, they would like to remove a portion of their existing assembly hall and demolish it and expand it, and then also add more instructional square footage. I can give you the approximate area of that. The first phase is eliminating, I'm sorry, is expanding 4,600 square feet for support services, so choir room, storage space, and then 3,000 square feet of the classrooms. And then in Phase Two, removing about 3,200 square feet, I'm sorry, yeah, removing 3,200 square feet of instructional space and adding 1,200 square feet. So kind of a couple of different things going on. They're also proposing to expand their parking to the east. Currently, that's a gravel. You can see in the aerial, it's a gravel lot, but they would, they meet the parking requirements now with the gravel and with their existing parking, but they would, just wanted to mention that they would, or they are interested in expanding the parking. Did not receive any phone calls or inquiries from residents, and we are recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a representative from, would you like to make any comments or...
I don't have a question.
Okay. All right, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for any questions, comments, concerns, or a motion from the commission.
I'd like to move to approve agenda item number nine for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number 10, case PL 2019-625, Dakota. It's a request for a waiver to extend the completion of subdivision bond phase. Mr. Crowdis?
Yes, this is for Dakota, Phase One, which is a 14-lot development. Last year, they were granted an extension for the third time. At that time, we did have a comment in there that we recommended it be the final extension. We primarily made that comment to be consistent with what we were doing with other developments. This one was a fairly small number of lots and was the appropriate percentage of the way through to make that call and go ahead and get paved. I did speak with the applicant. He seemed to be unaware this time around that we had made that comment. Said he's willing to pave it. Obviously, he would need some more time to do that, but he was holding off, as you can see in the attached request email he sent, for various reasons. There is some construction going on in Phase Two that branches off of Phase One, so some of that road is being trafficked by construction traffic. A couple of other things that are a little different with this one than others. With the wearing surface that gets put on, a lot of times in bigger subdivisions, there's a sewer main running down the center of the road, so the manhole lids are sticking up everywhere. That sort of aggravates the owners having to dodge those when they have their day-to-day trips on the street. You also have curbing gutter in a traditional subdivision where the lip of the gutter is left sticking up, so a lot of the runoff doesn't get caught in the inlets like it should, and it can just be a bit of a nuisance for the people that live there. In this subdivision, there's a little bit of curbing gutter at the front, and then it stops and continues as a non-curbing gutter section with roadside ditches, so that's not really been an issue out there. And again, they're on septic, so there's no manhole lids in the middle of the streets, and we actually haven't had any complaints from anybody. So I did wanna put that out there in case y'all were considering giving them an additional extension. There's some things to lean on here for this one in particular.
I don't recall if we talked about this at Packet, but what's the status of the construction there on that subdivision on Mountain Way? Is that, are they building there yet, or is it built out? I mean, I can't tell from this particular map.
My understanding is it's currently under construction, just probably more active than the Phase One. They're not quite as, I'll say they're not quite as big a lots, but I don't think the homes are as big and custom as the other houses in Phase One. He did indicate in Phase One, one of the reasons it goes so slow is, you know, he's not doing any spec homes, so he waits until somebody buys the lot and is ready to build on it. There's several lots out there apparently that people have purchased and are waiting for the right time to actually put their home on it, and he's just been working with them, and when they're ready, they're gonna submit their design to the builder and get underway. So it's not like he's a builder and is just going slow. He said the way he's done this, he has no control over the pace of it. It's just when people are ready to go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. This does not require a public hearing. Is there a representative, the applicant, that might wanna say something? Not here tonight? Okay. Questions, comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to deny the request for the waiver based on how tolerant we've been with prior waivers and the fact that this particular subdivision is built out, exceeding our general guidelines for waivers.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, a motion?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Upon final pavement, it's then turned over to you, correct, at the city, to handle as a public road, right?
It is, and there's a warranty that comes with that, Suzie, a one-year warranty period once we accept it.
We make him go ahead and pave it, and then the construction is continuously on it. It then potentially leads to expense for the city.
Well, you say there's a warranty, though, so it's covered by, that's not gonna be paid for by the city, right?
The one-year warranty is covered by the builder, correct? The developer?
Right.
Right, okay. And that's kind of the question I was getting at when we were talking about Mountain Way. You know, they're gonna be continually using it, so...
Obviously, that's if the developer is the one who does it. If the bond were to be called and we paved it, obviously, there's no warranty, but...
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Okay, so we'll have a, why don't you give us a roll call there? So this is, the motion is to deny.
Blaine Bledsoe.
No.
Robin Bridges.
No.
Phil Chanceford.
I'd say yes, deny.
Jana Jaeger.
No.
Matt Blasen.
Aye.
Marcus Marshall.
No.
Warren McBoort.
Yes.
Nonet Reese.
No.
Bob Brighton.
Yes.
What's that?
That is 54...
No.
Well, 45, so the motion to deny fails.
Fails.
Fails, okay.
Now you need a motion.
Say again?
Now you need a new motion to grant the waiver.
To grant the waiver, okay, that's right.
I move to grant the waiver. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Say no as well. Yeah. Okay, that motion carries, and there is a waiver. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to other business. One thing I neglected to do, and I'm gonna do it right now, is allow for some, at the very beginning of these meetings, we always give a little time for citizens' communication, and I neglected to do that. So I just wanna offer the time for anybody that would like to come forward and speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. And if you have something that you'd like to say that's not on the agenda, please come forward now. State your name and address, please, and then sign in as well.
Sure. Dr. Stephen Hammerick. I'm at 2071 Fieldview Drive, Auburn, Alabama. And I've got sort of a question to ask you. I need your expertise. And it's sort of a hypothetical question, and I'll try to be brief. Let's say a businessman, a guy named Joe, he wants to build a business, a retail business. Let's say it's auto salvage, and he gets a piece of land cheap, and he knows that if he can get the land converted over to commercial, he can put his business there, but it's not in the right area for land use for that. So he thinks about it, and Joe says, "Well, why don't I just propose a different business that does fit that area?" Because he's looked at what the city can do. The city has rules where the land use and the building are considered separately, and he doesn't really care if the auto salvage business is put down or not. He can propose this other business, and it's considered separately from the land use, and it goes through. The Planning Commission, the city council approve the change of the land use. And then he says, "Well, now I've got my commercial land, I can put my auto salvage business there." And he goes and tells his friend Josh, says, "Look, I did this. I just, all I had to do was just say, 'I've got a business I wanna put there, but I put a proposal before them for a business that was approved for the land use, and then I switched it out once I got my commercial approval.'" And Josh says, "Hey, that's cool. I'll do that same thing." Is there really any way to stop that kind of thing from going on? Once the land has been approved and going to, let's say, rural to a commercial, and the guy has this commercial land, is there anything that can stop him from doing that? Is that...
Well, there's a land use, you know, like you say, there are rules, and so there is certain land use for certain areas of town. And so once, you know, that sort of, when we get a recommendation for a particular use, again, there's a lot of, it depends in this thing, but if it's a conditional use, then this is the body that makes a decision on whether that use is appropriate for that location.
Right.
Now, if we go through the process of changing land use rules, which we do over time, like about every five years, we review our land use regulations and all that sort of thing, it's conceivable that we could adjust the land use rules. But just coming through a couple of times through the Planning Commission, I'm hoping that we'd have enough, we'd be paying attention a little bit to keep that from just happening, you know, willy-nilly.
Yeah, and I would think you should. But that's my concern, because I'm concerned that, considering the business separate from the land use, it's a loophole that people could exploit. You understand my saying?
Well, and I think it's important to understand with each land use, there is a table of permitted uses.
Yes, but my thing is, what if the guy says he's gonna do a business that goes for that particular land use and then doesn't do it, and then he does a different business?
But if his business is on the permitted table, we don't have to approve that.
I'll hypothetically respond to the hypothetical question.
Yes.
In this hypothetical scenario, you had two considerations. You had a rezoning consideration, which your recommending body requires city council approval. You had a conditional use request for the same property that was requesting the rezoning, for which you rendered a recommendation that was also subject to council approval. The rezoning request stands on its own merit. The conditional use request has a whole different set of criteria that are evaluated. It stands on its own merit. In this particular case, it was unambiguous that the rezoning request was consistent with the future land use plan. In this particular case, a conditional use was requested, that ultimately there were concerns about it, it had been tabled. The applicant withdrew that request. That doesn't mean that the applicant can build what he asks to build as part of the conditional use request, because he never got approval to build it. So therefore, what is he left with? He's left with whatever he can do with the zoning that he obtained, which in this case is Comprehensive Development District. If a use in that district is permitted by right, it can be established administratively. It'll go through our Administrative Site Plan Review Process, and it'll be constructed. No public hearing required. If he wants to come back and propose a use like the one he proposed before, or another that is classified as a conditional use, it still has to go through that same process. So the hypothetical that we're talking about, there is no use approved, but there is a new zoning designation in place.
Mm-hmm. Now, let's say Joe tells his friend Josh the same thing, and he tries to do it, too. He tries to say, "I'm gonna build this business on this land that's permitted for that land use," but he's not really planning on doing that. He just wants to get the land changed over so he can build what he wants to. And is the, my question is, is the rules as they are too low a standard to prevent such a thing from happening? Are we gonna allow abuse that way? That, to me, seems like a dangerous practice or...
Yeah, I mean, this hypothetical is assuming an abuse that has not occurred. There has been no abuse.
You think on it.
I have.
Maybe we'll have a little discussion at our next Packet. That might be something interesting, just to knock around. Okay, anybody else for citizens' communication? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna move on to other business. We have agenda item number 11, which is case PL 2019-161, and it's... We have a agenda item number 11, which is case PL 2019 161, and it's the Talmage subdivision. It's a request for a rehearing for preliminary plat approval for a conventional, single-family residential subdivision. There's going to be no vote, but it's just a discussion, well, I guess we would have to vote to rehear.
Yes, sir.
Right, so we'll have a, we'll have a motion to rehear this item if, should we, one way or the other. So, Mr. Cotton.
Well, put together a memo for you. You have a number of exhibits in your packet, just to kind of revisit the history with this particular request. It was before you a few months ago, actually, back in August. The preliminary plat approval failed to be approved. As such, the, I think the applicant kind of took a step back. There was also discussion during this about, a lot of it had to deal with actually infrastructure and connecting the property to sewer. There were some rezoning considerations. There was also another matter with the Board of Zoning Adjustment having approved a variance to reduce some lot sizes in our rural zone, so you had a lot of moving parts going on here, but from what I drew away from the hearing, a big issue was sewer connection policy and getting a better understanding on how that's handled when waivers are granted, who grants them, what criteria is employed that would lead someone to recommend approval of a waiver, and so that led me to reach out to our Water Resource Management Director, Eric Carson, who then came to your September packet meeting and provided you a presentation and hopefully enlightened all of us, certainly myself, about sewer policy and what the requirements are, what the Health Department requirements are versus what the city's requirements are, and what type of criteria that he employs when considering a waiver request and whether he chooses to approve it or deny it. In this particular instance, the Water Resource Management Director saw fit to approve the waiver. So, and this, what you're considering tonight is whether or not something has changed significantly from when you considered this previously, such that it should warrant a, a rehearing of that preliminary plat application. So what you've got in your packet is you've, you've kind of got the, you've got the minutes from the past meeting. We went ahead and included the presentation that Mr. Carson gave a couple of months ago, just to refresh your memory, so that you could consider this as holistically as possible, and then make your decision as you see fit.
And we're saying that the, what's changed is that we have new information from the Water Board, basically.
I think that could be one conclusion that you, you could draw, is that there's information that's been made available to you that you did not, you were not privy to previously.
And all we're voting on tonight is to rehear it. So if we, if we say we'll rehear it.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the discussion again.
I think you can safely assume it'll be back in front of you at your December meeting, but it's essentially, it's a, it's de novo, it's a do-over.
But we'll have the opportunity to have that discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Is there anybody that's here representing? Would, do you have anything you'd like to say about this, or?
We're pretty much covering it. We're just asking for a rehear and, you know, look at the deal.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any further discussion? I think we've covered a lot of it during the packet meeting. Is there anything else that we want to talk about this, or should I just take a, get a motion?
I, I don't think I've heard anything that would warrant a rehearing from what we've had before, and, and we have policies and guidelines and rules for timing of certain things, and I think everybody ought to follow those, and, and I would make a motion that we not hear this item.
Have a motion? I have a second. Not hearing a second, then I guess we will, that keeps us from voting to deny the request, so I ask for another motion.
I move to.
Just going to make a comment.
Okay, sorry.
And that is, one of our policies, we're talking about sticking to our policies, sometime, but we have these rules that are dealing with the technical situation, but one of our policies does allow for our Water Resources Manager to grant a waiver. What happened that, as far as I was concerned at the time, I think everybody took for granted that we understood why that waiver. It seemed arbitrary to me at the time, but it's now been clarified.
I would like to move to rehear the preliminary plat.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries. There will, will rehear that date certain?
I would expect you'll see the application back in front of you for December.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda items. Mr. Cotton, is there anything further for the commission?
No, just another reminder, we won't see each other for a while, but after the holiday, we'll get together to talk about short-term rentals, and I transmitted some.
Remind me of that date.
December 3rd, right? December 3rd at 4 o'clock. That's a council meeting night, so.
But we're providing dinner that day, right?
Well, that's probably not a bad idea. But I did send you some preliminary material that I was able to actually just transmit out right before the meeting, so I wouldn't expect that you would have had a chance to really see it yet, but as you get into it a little bit, it's not terribly voluminous, but hopefully it's informative, and hopefully it'll set the stage for, for some, some interesting discussion when we get together.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.